Okay, it's seven fifteen, I'll call the meeting to order for the East Hattam Planning and Zoning Commission for the Town of East Hattam. Uh, for October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, could I have attendance, please?
Uh, Corey Broner.
Here.
James Curtin, absent, Richard Pettenelli.
Here.
Bernard Gillis.
Here.
Deborah Langman.
Yeah.
Tony Demain.
Here.
Susan Kinzman.
Here.
Okay, minutes. Did we, what meeting, what month, uh, week did we miss? Was it, uh, August twenty-sixth?
Yes.
Did you approve, and then last week, so, do people have August twenty-sixth, and did they have time to review it?
Yes.
I'm gonna extend because I wasn't at the meeting.
Okay. You weren't there either.
I wasn't there either.
Okay.
Okay.
I didn't see anything with the minutes.
Debbie, you all set, Bernie?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, except the minutes as they are. Okay, September twenty-third. Oh, was it there? Oh, where was it? Okay, everyone good?
Yeah.
Okay, well, except the minutes as they are. Any bills, Jim?
No bills.
Okay, acknowledgements. Uh, application PZC, number twenty-five dash seventeen, uh, four sixteen, East Hattam, Mudus Road. Property location, Shanani Inc. Application of property owner, map sixty-four, lot sixty-four, uh, reconstruction of existing gas station slash convenience store with drive-through window.
So, part of your package for your homework assignment is the application, the site plan, the architecturals, the photometrics, the, um, materials to be used on the signage, and the, um, some information on the, the box. We're looking to have this hold a public hearing on October twenty-eighth. There's also a letter in there from the Chatham Health District. This has all been posted on the town webpage. There also is a traffic study with this. Quite extensive, I'm gonna see if I can get the electronic version, uh, first. Everything was brought down to, uh, Brian Curtisen, uh, two weeks ago, when the guy brought it down, so. So, they're ready to make a presentation on October twenty-eight.
Have you looked at the traffic study?
Yeah, but.
Are they, is the traffic down over the years?
I didn't take a look at that specifically.
I was just kinda curious.
You know, I don't know.
I'm sorry, our, our traffic studies have bounced back. Okay.
Excuse me, I'd like to make a comment by night, as far as this.
And you are, please, for the record?
Yes, Stephanie Anton, with attorneys Jessica Barbie and Danton.
Okay.
And I'm just curious how this application would make it to public hearing, and it's quite clear that, um, the application on its face is contrary to the regulations. There's no provision for a property in a C-three zone to have a drive-through, and so, um.
So, so that, I'm gonna cut everything short, cause this isn't the public hearing, but your opportunity will be at that point to submit evidence to that. Um, and I, I don't wanna get into a long lengthy discussion while it's outside of the public hearing formal. The applicant isn't here. So, we're, you know, it's, it's best, it's best served to bring that discussion up at the public hearing.
I, I understand, the concern is the cost and expense associated with experts reviewing the file, everything involved, getting to public hearing. It, it cannot possibly be approved based on the fact that you can't have a drive-through in a C-three zone.
So, we, again, I, it's best I can say is then be discussed at that time.
We'll address it then, plus the applicant isn't here, so I'm not gonna tread over that water, not have, having, um, evidence presented with the applicant not here to defend themselves, cause then that's opening me up and this commission to a lawsuit.
I understand, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? From the commission? Okay.
No.
Okay. I'd, um, I'd accept a motion to set a public hearing date for, uh, second meeting in October, which is the twenty-eighth. So, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Okay, application PZC, number twenty-five dash eighteen, four forty Town Street. Property location, East Hattam Firehouse, Town of East Hattam. Applicant and property owner, G, I'm, I'm sorry, CGS eight dash twenty-four, review of a proposed replacement of an existing tower with a hundred and fifty-foot monopole energy service tower.
Emergency, emergency service.
Right, but what is a CGS?
It's, it's, cause it's a public improvement.
Okay.
So, it's before you, this is a, not, this is a major, you know, project, so we, you know, we've talked about major and minor projects, a major project should go before the public hearing process. Uh, you've been given the preliminary diagrams and sketches of, of the proposal. I also am giving you, for your review for next meeting, if you have questions in the next meeting, if not today, the propagation maps of the emergency service. I just got this. Now, so. For your review, and then you'll be able to ask questions, and this one also will be ready for October twenty-eighth.
I'm just curious if the, is the height of the existing tower on the, on the plan? I didn't see it.
Don't know.
Yeah, okay.
Well, not, you know.
I just wanted a comparison.
It, it is mentioned on, on the propagation map stuff, okay.
I didn't catch this question.
Is it height of the tower?
Existing tower.
So. It's sixty foot.
Sixty feet, on the second page.
I see it.
This is gone before the sighting council.
Because it's a town-owned, existing tower, I ran this by our attorney, and the attorney ran it through by the sighting council. Uh, it doesn't, because it's an existing tower, so.
This is for exclusive use for emergency services?
Those are all the questions I'd rather leave to the public hearing.
I'm just questioning why it's coming before us.
It's according to our attorney and according to the sighting council, it can. If there's anything added on to it after, that has to go to the sighting council.
There's already pending applications before the sighting council for, um, competing towers, and if this tower could, provide the coverage that those competing towers might provide, and I think that would, uh, make more sense for the co- sighting council to take a look at this.
I don't think this tower has any effect on any past or, uh, any, any recent applications. And that's something, you know, I'm not the technical expert, I'd rather not answer all those questions, um, but.
So, is there something that we're supposed to discuss and talk about, or?
The public hearing, you have to be, right, it goes right up and down those questions. I just gave you all the paperwork ahead of it for homework assignment, but the selectmen has agreed to entertain the possibility of this being done, and they asked for, before they could sign a contract, they need an eight dash twenty-four approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
This would be paid for by the town?
No, that's, that's, I don't know all of those details. So.
So, basically, it's for emergency, not for fall at this point?
The first use on the top is emergency.
That means other carriers can piggyback on it.
Well, that's what you have to determine after the fact.
Do you have to ask these questions before?
Yeah, public hearing, you ask all you want, like, please.
I guess I'm, with Susan, it's like, why is this brought for us for approval?
Because the attorney says it comes to us first.
Let's, let's put it this way, if you, if you read the documents, and these have also been posted on the webpage, if you read the documents, it's self-explanatory, and we can talk about it then. I just don't wanna get into a whole public process.
But we're approving this?
Not.
Not right now, we're setting a hearing date.
Public hearing to discuss these facts.
We're setting a pub, we're setting a public hearing to discuss it.
Remending it or sending it off?
Remending it.
You're setting a public hearing date.
Setting it.
To discuss it.
And then we will talk about it at that point.
And we get the documentation, we, we have to go on the other side here.
No, you got it, I gave it to you, everything that I, yeah, everything that I have is on there. Also on the.
Just the maps?
The maps just came, and I just sent it to Linda twenty minutes ago, twenty-five.
And just in case other people weren't aware of it, the, uh, the one on the East Hattam Turnpike was approved October seventh, I think, or.
Well, before that, but yeah.
Yeah, there, so that, that one's been approved.
Yep. Okay, I'd entertain a motion to set a public hearing date for the second meeting of October, which is the twenty-eighth. Could I have a motion, please?
Still moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? Okay.
Do we have to have both these things up for public hearing on the same night? Why can't we move them one down the road?
They're both gonna be ready that day, that night.
The vote's ready, and I'm on a timeline, I'd like to get everything done before I take some time off. So, let's get some things done.
Plus, their time is ticking too.
Yeah.
The dates have already been set. So. Susan, you haven't been here since when? We've been here to eleven, one o'clock in the morning, doing this?
No, no.
I'm not gonna be here till eleven.
We have had those meetings, but.
It would be lack of planning on our part if we.
Sometimes, it happens. Okay. Site plan review, application PZC, number twenty-five dash fifteen, uh, White Sands Road, property location, David Burr, applicant and property owner, map zero six six, lot two-two-seven, two-two-eight, two-two-nine, two-three-zero, proposed new residential home.
So, the two items that were requested was an engineer's stamp, which is on the plan.
Yep.
And a location map, which is now on the plans. The, I talked about the traffic system, um, with, uh, Chatham Health District, and they were still good with what their, their lawyer stated, that it didn't meet the criteria for a three-bedroom house. She's, we do have test pits in the neighborhood of other areas. Go a little bit past eight or nine feet, but because it's all sand and gravel, it's caving in, and they decided, she decided that we're not doing that. But there are, this is one big gravel pit, and as I've said in the past, that if we were in a planning stage, I'd have left this unbuilt and made it a water, future water system, because it's all stratified drift. So, those are the two outstanding items we were waiting for.
Um, remind me, were there any restrictions from Chatham?
No.
No?
No, because it's, it's so good, the only thing I think she mentioned, no, I don't even think so, I don't think there was any restrictions. No. I read it in the record. No.
No, man.
Yeah.
So, is that rich?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions, comments from anyone? Did you need to add anything, sir, or?
Okay.
And anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve application PZ, PZC twenty-five dash fifteen, White Sands Road, property location, David Burr, applicant and property owner, map sixty-six, lot two-twenty-seven, twen- two-twenty-eight, two-twenty-nine, and two-thirty, for a proposed new residential home.
Is there any one question, one, uh, thing, something that is required, uh, that the lots be merged?
Oh.
Alright.
Subject, yeah, that subject to the lots getting, yeah, conditions upon the lots being merged to one prior to the filing.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good luck. Eight dash twenty-four, review of open space projects.
So, we have two of them that the open space committee said go out and talk to all the boards and commissions about. The first one is the Spreaker Property Exchange, and it literally was in the works in two thousand and twelve. So much so that when we bought the Harris property, uh, we cut out that section of land on, on the Harris property, because it was historically used by his family for access to the farm fields in the back. Uh, in exchange, the town is getting just over two acres of land that is gonna be free, exchange, and then a conservation easement on another one point of six acres of land. What that provides is an access way to take you from the Harris through Spreaker, through Dean, and over to the Hatch Lot, and to the, the Dean Conservation Easement for trails. So.
So, you're looking at what, the, the green and the r- yellow?
Yes, the green and the yellow, yep, the green and the yellow on that last page, uh, is what would be from Spreaker, and that is to Spreaker. The s- second piece is the King property, which is ten point two-six acres. It is a long roaring brook.
Can I just interject? So, we don't have connection to, um, to Dean?
Yeah, we do, we, Dean's under conservation easement.
Yeah, but that, the, the field, the cattle field across the street.
Right.
We don't have access to that.
Yes.
When did you get that?
Back whenever we did the easement. Whenever I did Dean, so, but we have to put up a fence, but we have access.
Okay, we have to put up a fence.
Yeah. Yeah, cause there's a big, there's a big bullet there.
That would be on the Dean property.
Yes. Yes, cause we were originally gonna run up on the north section of the Dean property, and that just didn't make sense from a hiking aspect, going between houses, anything like that.
So, for, to bother up on, yeah, on the top part of Dean property?
Top part of it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And this would be a more open field.
Is the town gonna pay for that fence?
Yeah. Yeah.
The King property?
Go ahead.
So, the King property, uh, runs along Roaring Brook. Hatch Lot is across the Roaring Brook to it. I, this summer, we went to Roaring Brook, it was dry. Shuffled.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but obviously, if anything's ever created in the future in the way of a bridge, it has to accommodate some serious waters when it's running, but tha- that is looking at it, also making a connection to get it to cross from the Hatch Lot, get on Cheapskin Hollow, the south section, to the north, you have the East Hattam Land Trust, Cheapskin Hollow Preserve, and to the south, here, through the Roaring Brook Preserve, that can make those connections to also.
So, what's the reasoning for getting the King property?
It's that to be able to do that connection, and also to all that access to Roaring Brook. That whole length of the property is, to the west is Roaring Brook. Okay, so.
Anyway.
Well, if right now it's privately owned, and this is publicly owned, has the ability of, you know, putting a picnic table or something there, there's a spot that's suitable for, you know, parking for a couple vehicles. But it's, it's this whole idea of interconnecting trails and making, you know, expanding our capabilities.
Susan, do you want to add anything you said on the commission?
I want to look at these sites. I agree with the, um, uh, investment on the Spreaker, uh, property exchange, it will, uh, it will make, uh, access to the Harris and a contin- uh, continuous trail as possible. Uh, the King Lot, um, I can see where we, uh.
We might acquire it, but it's, um, it's not gonna provide immediate access to the Hatch Lot without construction of a fairly substantial across the wetlands, um, and it's, uh, you know, it's beautiful property.
Of course, it's up in that area, yeah.
And, uh, we have a lot of protection that, you know, nice to keep in a lot area there too, where people can picnic, um, it's not just a wetland, but it's not developable um, the way that it's currently configured. But as a, uh, as an addition to our open space, uh, I would put it up there, I'd put it up there as the top ten in my view, but I'm only one, one of them.
Mm-hmm. But when it comes to available, sometimes, yeah. Questions, comments from the commission?
Jim, what's the hatched area in the middle?
Hatch Lot.
No, no, he's talking about one of the maps I provided. So, the hatched area is conservation easement area, that's all part of it.
Right, yeah.
And that's why the price is so low, because it's already under conservation. That's what separates it from the rest of it. Lush.
Excuse me.
And what's the price?
And this all falls under our plan of conservation development for expanding our open spaces and making continuous, and you're looking for the recommendation from the commission.
Correct.
Okay.
Reg is just an even trade?
Trades is trade.
Yep. Thoughts, comments? Anyone care to make a recommendation?
I'd recommend we, uh, purchase the Dale King property, ten acres on Cheapskin Hollow Road.
And how about the Spreaker property, make the extension, yeah.
And, uh, also the, uh, property exchange with the Spreaker property on, uh, Shanigan?
Shanigan.
And, uh, with the town.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Mudus Master Plan.
Jim wanted to go over it, unfortunately, he's not here this evening. Um, I know, uh, Mr. Barlow had some comments, but you said that we had addressed it all.
No, no, yeah, but we can address it.
Okay.
So. The first two, um, well, first one, he said kudos for doing it, the second comment that he had was, like to confirm that the PDC and PNC are committed to this ambitious schedule, that's on us. Third one was about historic districts, and one of the things. That's just one.
Yep.
Thank you. One of the things under, uh, sustainability and resilience.
What paper you want?
That would be part of the one oh six. My recommendation is that we create a new section, which would be A five B, under recommendations. Encourage the historic preservation of Mudus, and it would be A, recommend the Historic District Commission, explore the feasibility of creating a Mudus Historic District, and B, create guidelines in the Planning and Zoning Regulations to preserve existing historic features. We did the same in, when we did our, uh, East Hattam Village, we kinda outlined the guidelines. I've also attached that for you to kinda look at, if we're gonna look around regulations, what part did we wanna steal from that to, to do that? So, I mean, if that makes sense.
Sorry, Jim, what new section are?
This would be under the, the checklist of things to do, so it's on page one oh six, it's under the recommendations and our, you know, timeline.
How feasible do you think all this timeline is?
I think from our standpoint, we can move on things.
We can what?
We can move on things, we can move on regulations, we can move on maps. We stuck ABC with a lot, where's Bob? Um, but, yeah, we can, you know, do that, um. He, you know, he, I, I understand his frustration doesn't include Brownell and Neptune Mill Building. It does include it, but we don't have recommendations, and.
Right.
I don't know how to answer that, um.
That can fall in place as time goes on also.
He also had concern about mapping, but it's kinda the same map we've been looking at now for six months, and.
With the map of, uh, the whole area, the study area?
Yeah, you know, and it, it, so, you know, um, grant opportunities, um, trail construction, that actually is actually mentioned on, uh, page ninety, it is on there. And eleven, he said expand trail, go left farm to senior housing, but I think we've kinda gotten beaten up on that for now, and their desire not to do that, uh, so we're there, and figure seventeen, I, your versions that Roger never got planned was visible. I didn't catch it, the last, so I emailed him and said, let's fix this.
What?
The, the Plains Road Plan.
Yes.
It just was tough. It just, it just came out very blurry on the last version, so I re-sent it to him, uh, I haven't got a response yet. We're kinda waiting for us to give us any other.
What, on the green area there?
Green, yeah.
Yeah, we haven't talked about that for a while, cause there was a, some people wanted it one way, some people wanted the other, so we still need to.
Well, but it's not, it's a conceptual, it's a conceptual, so it's not a final plan, but you couldn't read it on the last version. It just, for some reason, came out blurry, which I think is a fixable item. If you took all the other PDFs, I think they should be able to take.
You remember that plan, correct, what we were talking about down on the, on the screen in front of Amnesty Day? I just wanna make sure everyone remembers what we're, okay.
I don't know if there's any other substantive, you know, things that people found, I mean, I know Jim, Jim did a wonderful job, proofreading it. Caught things that.
Yeah, but he's, unfortunately, not here.
All of those things that he caught have been added right to the version.
Anyone else?
I don't know. Yeah, I got some questions. This, uh, list of historical structures, this is all in the target area?
Those are, yeah, all these.
Yeah. And they're all considered historic?
No. Well, they're, they're, no, they are, they are in art, in those two big volumes, they are in there, um, listed. And, and so, you know, we, we expect time and money and the, you know.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand.
It's still in, it's this deck.
Existing homes.
Existing homes, not all of them, they're still there.
So, how do we define historic?
I'll have you and Will and, and Dr. Soft, uh, argue with that. You know, Will's, Will's in the seventeen and eighteen hundreds, and Carl's even further back, and, and, it, you know,
obviously, the Brownell Mill isn't historic.
Was, but it didn't, the, didn't make it.
No, I mean the one down and back there.
No, that's all new.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. The one that was torn down was.
Doesn't ship a lot of the definition of historic?
Yeah, there's that, there's.
Statutory definitions.
Yeah.
Historic structure.
So if you were to establish a historic district in Mudus, uh, where would you start? So, first part, establish the historic district takes sixty-six percent of homeowners to agree. And I talked to Will Brady about this, chairman of the historic district, and he said, past efforts have failed, because just to get it to the town vote, you do need concurrence of sixty-six percent. And they were able to do that for four districts in town. You know, and, and I mean, if I was gonna start an effort, I think maybe I'd start at Plains Road and work with that, because you do have historic structures up and down, you know, versus a larger area that doesn't. But that's, that is their legislative call and.
You can start small and then expand later.
But Plains Road is good, but, cause those are the obvious ones that stick out.
North Mudus Road and Plains, yeah.
I'm sorry?
North Mudus Road and Plains, probably.
Yeah, yes, North Mudus, yeah.
Viable historic areas.
Yeah, you should get sixty-six percent there.
Forty-nine's kind of been wiped out.
Some of Falls Road, you know, from the post office to the, you know, me, you know, I mean, there are, there are unique structures that are probably built in the twenties, but they're, they're gorgeous. Um, if you like that stuff, so, you know, it is, some of it does fall into that, that's over a hundred years now.
I think with recent events, this would play well to the Plains Road and that general area, I think sixty-six percent is very doable.
Well, and like I said, that'd be on them to.
Right, forward, not on us. So, but who would start that?
They, they would, they maybe, you know, they.
Historic.
Historical stories, okay.
And, and he, he told me, it has come up in, you know, previous discussions, it's, you know, when do we go for the next one and.
But now's the time.
You know.
Yeah, I think now is definitely the time.
You know Will Brady, then give him a call.
Uh, one other question, um, I noticed there's a, a seven acre parcel north, uh, south of the, um, senior housing. It's vacant. And it's owned by the, the corporation. Is it a viable building site for additional senior housing? Yes. It's left off the table when they built the senior housing. I came down to funding, when they, what they could fund, fit, yeah. And you, could you add additional housing in, on the footprint of where the existing senior housing is now? I don't know the septic system well enough, I'm thinking that it's pretty old at this point. So, it probably with renovation and upgrades, probably could. And who would make that decision? The corporation? Corporation, yeah. Who's the corporation? So, it is, it's a quasi governmental slash private entity, you know, they took, put this together. They have a board of directors, I think Brad's chair. Yes. Yeah. Uh, I, um, they look at these things, I mean, you know, one of the problems, which is, that place has a huge weight in this also. You don't have to go in there, because it is, there is some assistance associated with it based on your income, but do they need more units? Yes, but then, you know, they just went, what? And you have to, grant application, upgrade all the units, cause they needed it after all these years, so they were able to do that. But, new units would have to be another fun balance.
How many units are there? I forget, no.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, okay. Any row or?
No, no.
Okay, so we're getting off the track here. Any other comments on the plan?
We've had this kind of stuck here for about four agendas now.
No, I know, Mr. Kazner, what are your thoughts?
Well, I basically, the, the initial map, I, I think, um, is adequate for now, but we try to kind of define exactly what people are going to build on, those different areas. Um, especially on that, uh, I don't know, what do you call it, that the, uh, King Road or that Ray Palm Road, or I don't know what's that.
Oh, okay. Ray Palm Road, yeah.
WMF.
No, only, Willie Maff is the, is the one like where Dutch is.
No, Ray Palm.
Oh, yeah.
Is that? Ray Palm?
Ray Palm, yeah.
Okay. And, uh, that area up in there, I, it, it looks like it could go either way, uh, maybe it, it should be a, a mixed use. Obviously, what was being proposed, uh, by Nutmeg was just really the, the box store, you know, as one store is high and, uh, and, and we weren't getting, uh, too much out of it. I, I would certainly far prefer to take and see, um, something two-story over there and possibly something that had a, a mix of a, a residential, uh, commercial use.
I thought that's what he was approved for, was it two-story mixed, um, business down below and. Office and/or apartments on top, was it?
No, he pulled that back, he started that way, then he pulled it back.
Okay.
So it, it just had an office upstairs and that was it. He still owns it, in fact, you know, I have, because we've been talking about this plan for quite a while now, it's been a year. I do have some investors that are looking for direction from the commission, because one of the bonuses is this plan has increasingly said, go down to one-third acre viable with septic. That opens up some opportunities for some housing, which housing in a village isn't a bad thing. Um, and I was hoping to get this plan, you know, moving along, um, so that we can, you know, finalize it. And the other part about it is that I did jump the gun a little bit based on there, and that's where you, another homework assignment, is I took their map and kind of colored it up, and they talked about sub-districts, just so we could start the conversation about creating sub-districts and what we want and don't want, all that, so.
Is that what that is?
That's what that is, and I got copies out there for everybody. Yeah, you know, it's a discussion about moving this, you know, when they asked, how fast can we do this, well, we can.
Paul, did you get this?
Uh, yes, I did get it.
Okay.
Yeah, you did.
Okay, that's all.
Yeah.
And I think, I'd like to take this too, but I, I agree with Jim, I think that, let's move along, uh, on this. And, uh, I, I think we're always gonna be going back and, you know, doing a little bit more than we can do. Um, but, you know, these things move so slowly that, uh, it would be nice to move something along here and, uh, and see if we could get to the next, uh, step. And then get to something that, you know, we'd be, we'd be looking for some money, something like, how are we going to, how are we going to finance this? Where would, where would the, the money come from?
Well, if we wanna move it, then we approve it, and knowing that we're gonna have to make changes in it as we go.
You know, it, it's a master plan, it's, it's not set in stone, it's, here's a vision. And I've never honestly, I think it's good, I read through it, I never had real problems with it. I, I think some of these, I think all these kinds of drawings are, are just that, and, and they're not gonna get built like that.
But it's a start.
They're nice pictures.
It's a start. We've been working on this for six, seven years now.
Right. And I, and I think this is what it is, and it also gives the public an idea as to where we're going here. Uh, so if somebody does buy one of these pieces of property, they have a little idea as to what this board is looking for. And, uh, and I, I, I think that, you know, we can then also take a, a look at, um, basically the, the sewer, is basically what are you gonna do with that? Uh, because that's gonna tell you how many you can have in density and silver, watch that. And we want that, that's the only way you can have enough capital and money to do it. So, you know, and I think that, that, that piece of land, uh, certainly is, uh, the root, you know, they're galling. Um, so we need to invest in the exact, uh, see what it is, and I think, uh, generally when you're looking at something now that's saying, look, it, uh, see what it is, I was talking with, uh, Larry Wester today. Um, and I think, uh, that's all, and they're, you know, that's what they're looking at. Um, but it's also been before he, for twenty-two months, waiting for he to approve it.
So are we at the point to say, okay, let's just do it, to approve it?
I, I could say go ahead.
Are you, uh, EDC all set? That's, I guess, my question to you?
Yeah, yeah, we, we would like to take you get into this and, uh.
And like I said, we can always make amendments or changes as we go, it's, it's a start. It's better than we've had. How does the commission feel? Are we ready just to, I mean, we made a couple change, no, not even tonight.
I'm gonna add the recommend, the two recommendations, the feasibility and the, the historic guidelines.
Yeah.
Yeah.
See that before we.
Do we need to see it?
It's two sentences.
Shoot us an email.
Yeah.
I would, I would recommend adding those two, um, provisions, and I think it adds, uh, creates a stronger plan. Um, I don't need to have to do all. That page is addressed to include that, um, it doesn't, uh, tie the hands of the Historic District Commission, should they decide it's not feasible. But it would be a, um.
Guideline?
It would be, you know, a strong message that this master plan is our, our guideline and that we're interested in preserving the resources, that, the historic resources that we've done.
If we wanted to make minor changes down the road, is it a simple, um, thing to do? So, if, if, like you said, it's, it's a, it's a plan. And so, once we, you know, tell the contractor that here's the final amendments, we get that copy. And just like the plan of conservation development, every ten years, you know, we come back to it and things may not be true anymore, so, you know, you might have to revise it.
I'm thinking of finding flaws in it, that we will, would want to correct.
This is the best part about it, it is a plan, it's guidelines, it's recommendations. It is not a construction diagram. Somebody made a mistake and the bridge can't hold it, you know, this, this is a guidelines.
Now, I guess I'm crossing that border and I.
Yeah, yeah, it, it's not.
There's, there's nothing binding in this, this is our vision, let's work, now, where I think it does give us some flexibility is if somebody comes in and proposes, I don't know, a building that precludes one of the plans in this, then we can push back, you said that doesn't fit the master plan, and you're gonna stop us from doing X, Y, and Z in the future. And you then have a little bit of strength to push back on it, but there's nothing binding in these. These are more, they're, they're really good to get grants.
Well, that's the whole thing, and be able to throw it out.
Right.
To.
So should, if we approve it, uh, probably, what would be the next?
Next step is. Huh?
Start marketing it.
Not only start marketing it, but taking that checklist, that's why I jumped the gun on this map and homework assignment is to look at the map and the sub-zones and the uses and say, okay, you know.
This doesn't have to be approved by the government.
No, no, this is a, this is a, you know, this is ours, and it's not even a, you know, it's not even like a plan of conservation development where you go to town meeting for final vote. This is just a master plan for the, for the area, yeah.
We've gotten the public input, uh, input twice, and thank God the second time was, and we had a lot of two hundred, over two hundred people, so that was very nice. And, uh, so, let's just see what we can do, do we, Tony?
I think, um, we contracted SLR to, you know, give us most maps and information, and they did it, and it's something to go on. Yeah.
We don't need a vote, or, yeah, we probably should? Who would like to make a?
Center master plan with two revisions that we discussed regarding historic and.
Feasibility and something, a second.
A second, all in favor? Hi. Hi. Any opposed? Okay.
Jim is secondary.
Yeah, six years.
Have you ever talked about bringing Jeff in?
Well, now we gotta.
Talk about.
Get it going, so.
These, uh, septic areas, these, um, sewer systems, Jeff, 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 remember the guy that was? Oh, yeah, yeah, I put, I, I wanted the technology in front of me and I, on that sewer system. Now, I've finally been west, Sabre doesn't have a plan, Health District down there doesn't have a plan, DEP contacted, which led, led me this morning to somebody who does. So I said, I, you know, if you got an electronic plan, I'd love to see it, if not, I'll take the ride to Harv, review it. Again, I just wanna know how they get a hundred and eighty-six units and eleven acres. Got it, I've got it, I physically gotta see the calculations.
Yeah.
So I can talk about it more.
Jeff had some pretty good ideas.
Oh, he does.
Yep, and educate us on, especially.
I know, but we still have some moves.
Okay, so BB Road?
So BB Road, Scenic Road.
Before we get into it.
Yes.
We're still waiting for the Asbills for the first project.
I understand.
We're gonna get them at, at any time?
I told Public Works to put it in their budget to do that. I, you know, it's not my.
I, I realize that, but it does, they do have the answer to this commission, and we've asked for it.
I know.
Could you nudge him again?
I will, will do. So, this is, uh, there's gonna be a cover letter coming with this, but because it's on the Wetlands agenda, I guarantee at the same time, the Wetlands Commission on some Sunday, uh, next month is gonna go out and look at this.
You, uh, let us know, just in case someone wants to walk up.
Yeah, and I, and I'll make that on the Wetlands agenda, the first stop in the morning, when we're out here, so.
Anything else on this?
Yeah, it's pretty self-planatory, goes with guardrails and all that stuff.
Okay, I got a question that's not on this. How did Connecticut Water end up owning all the water in Mudus?
So, not under Mudus, they don't own under Mudus, they own it under Banff.
How does that happen when it, when, when it's not under the rest of the town?
So.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, I, I know the answer, so the.
I know you do.
So the State of Connecticut put legislation together in the eighties, saying that they are gonna provide safe and adequate water for all communities. And they went and did studies on the western side of the Connecticut River, and they divvied up the land between municipal water companies and private water companies. Without really much public input knowledgeable about what just happened, but the water rights were granted to whoever. And they sometimes had to have some quibbling over it and some fights about who has what, but the water rights were given away. So the gold underneath you is gone, so nobody realized what was going on, and so if you were a town and you're on that side and you drill a well for the school, well, you have to do a study, drill the well, hand it over to Connecticut Water and pay them. Same thing if you were doing an assisted living, same thing, you do all the work, do all the investment, you install it, then you pay them, and at their rate was, you know, back when I was talking about this, it was seven hundred dollars a unit per year. Well, when you have a brand-new Cadillac, it costs you nothing. And so, but they are distributing the cost throughout the whole state of old systems. Happy and said, when it came to us, I went and said, okay, let's talk about it. I said, I have no problem giving you the water right to the town, if you allow municipal projects to go in without this. And they said, no way. And I said, well, congratulations, I want the water rights. And they already had their boundaries for Lake Hayward, the west side, and Banner. And they, they, you know, first they, they said, you can't do it and everything else, and I said, yeah, we can collect, if we can collect eighteen million dollars in taxes, we can operate this, it's not a problem. I said, you are unwilling to negotiate with us, so it's not happening. So then they turned around and said, well, we'll give you Banner and Lake Hayward, you can take them both, I said, I'll take. So then they turned around and said, well, we'll give you Banner and Lake Hayward, you can take them both, I said, I'll take them. And they're like, why would you do that? I said, well, first place, you're obviously making money out of the two of them, I'll take them. They withdrew that, and finally, they threw their arms in frustration and said, we'll keep Banner, we'll keep Lake Hayward. You can have the town, so Goodspeed Opera House has put a water system in. The Grove Street has put a water system in. The elementary school did a re-water system in, and they're brand-new systems, so their operational costs are way down. Not the seven hundred or eight hundred or nine hundred dollars per unit cost. So, that's, that's how that happened. The only other town east of the river that. Stood up was lying. And Ralphino stood up right after me and said, I said what he said, and they just tossed their arms up and said, fine.
So they didn't take anything along, cause there's not much there.
There's not much there, and they said, we're not gonna argue about that, you can have it. But a lot of these smaller communities now are finding out that they wanna do something that fits in the community water system situation. They're paying the viper. And East Hampton is the worst because there's three water companies involved in there, one being the town. And they don't have enough water between the three companies, so.
So that's, okay.
So, yeah, so they own anything that's in that footprint of Banner and the properties, the golf course and adjoining properties is. Yeah, it's on the map, if you, if you go to the water coordinating, water utility coordinating committee, there's a maps for each town. I'll, I'll see if I can clip that out tomorrow.
Question on BB, if we're putting in the Mayor Parkway guy rail. For this project, we're gonna put it on the other one while we're out there?
Again, not my budget.
Again, potential liability to town.
You, you know that, I know that, they know that.
Is this the same bridge that was replaced before?
No, this is a, this is further down the road.
Where the Beavers were, or no?
Oh, yeah.
The Causeway.
It's more of a Causeway, yeah, yeah, it's a longer stretch of open water. At Marsh.
And when is this proposal, when do they propose to do?
They're looking to go to bid in January or February.
And how long would it really, really be closed?
Not sure, that's a question I'll have to ask them. All at least.
Well, it's a pre, it's a precast, it's a precast.
It's a precast, but there's a.
I'm part of the detour route, so I'd like to know.
No, I know. Some people wanna see a close, so.
Yeah.
Okay, anything for the, uh, administration report?
No, had enough. This was enough tonight.
Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay.